Testing one two three test test test.
Mr. Brian Thomas, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I'll start over. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer meditation. I got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now can I get an amendment to the agenda? Mr. Michler.
Yes, I propose that we remove proposed Resolution 24-R-14 from the tabled ordinances and resolutions and move to presentations and introductions.
I got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution? Got a motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Michler. Mr. Thomas, would you please read proposed Resolution 24-R-14 in its entirety?
I certainly will. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to read this resolution from on this side of the podium.
Please introduce yourself.
It's been a long time coming, two weeks. Last time I was here, I was very impressed by this council's thoroughness of over talking every issue. And we had to leave, but thanks for inviting us back. I'm Brian Thomas, a member of the Elkhart Lions Club, and I'd like to re-propose Resolution Number 24-R-14. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, recognizing the Elkhart Lions Club for its achievements and its contributions to the Elkhart community. Whereas the service organization known as the Lions Club International was founded in Chicago in 1923, and whereas the Elkhart Lions Club was granted a charter in April of 1924, and whereas the Elkhart Lions have served the community of Elkhart for 100 years. And whereas the Elkhart Lions have been a valuable asset to the Elkhart community by virtue of numerous city civic projects and donations throughout those 100 years, and whereas, be it known, that these projects include an annual newspaper sale, fundraising, years of recognition to Elkhart athletic teams, continued efforts to collect eyeglasses and provide vision screening for schoolchildren, continued sponsorship of the flags from the Heart Project, participation in its community events, and a conduit for community involvement by its membership. Whereas, in honor of the Elkhart Lions' 100th year, a full-size bronze lion was commissioned and donated to the City of Elkhart by its members as a lasting work of art in downtown Elkhart. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, that the City of Elkhart recognizes the Elkhart Lions for its 100 years of community service and wishes the Elkhart Lions continued success in providing many, many more years of involvement in the well-being of the City of Elkhart, Indiana. The foregoing is passed and adopted by the Common Council this first day of July 2024.
Thank you.
And if you're thoroughly impressed by everything the Lions Club does and you wish to become a member, see myself or Lion Susan at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. I want to open up to the public now, if anyone in the public would like to speak with regards to this resolution. Saying now, we turn it back for the council, and the other council discussion, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I kind of went to a couple Lions Clubs meetings over the years with Brian, and I'm really impressed with the flag that they do. I thought this would be a good time to do a commercial on the flags that you put up every year.
Yes, that's a good one, Brian. He's a good recruit when he gets retired, he's a good recruit.
Well, you should tell everybody about the flags and get them all to buy one next year. I know that they have spent a lot of hours on Main Street doing the things that they do, but the larger extent with vision, with glasses, and you know, 1924, you could imagine the lives touched by this group. Brian specifically has been a lieutenant governor of Lions, correct? District governor. There you go. So clearly believes in, I know some of the, the people that Brian serves with, all great-minded and great-hearted people. So thank you. It just so happens that our high school is the Elkhart Lions, so I assumed it was a dual-purpose bronze. We'll find out when we win the sectional.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this proposed resolution?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Brian, if you want to stick around and enjoy some of our over-indulgence into council business, you're more than welcome to stay.
On that note, hold on, Arvis. On that note, council members, please don't leave. I have, everybody has to sign the resolution tonight.
Okay, thank you. Reports of council committees. Mr. Mishler.
Thank you. The Tax Abatement Committee met on Wednesday, June 26 to discuss, I believe it was around 17 tax abatements, and to make recommendations back to the council on whether or not a business was in compliance or not in compliance.
Thank you. Orders on second and third reading. Proposed orders 24-O-22. Angie, would you read that by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-22, an ordinance amending ordinance 5283, and ordinance regulating illicit discharge and connections to the City of Elkhart's storm water system.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second to adopt this on second reading. Motion by Mr. Hanky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crabtree. I see Mr. Foye in the back who may have something.
Uh, Joe Foye, Stormwater Manager for the City of Elkhart. No, I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody have any questions for Joe? Mr. Hanky.
So there have been phone calls in regards to this. I don't pretend to understand the full notion, but I would say I'm a little in between two different places. Number one, I see Laura Colos remarks in regards to a current user that has created plugs within our system costing thousands and tens of thousands, potentially over six months, and arguing that, some of the board argued that the fine of $2,500 should be relieved, and I'm thinking, you know, if there's no penalty in this stuff, what, what are we doing, number one? And then the second part about that, I had a couple of businesses call and say that the monitoring will cost them $50,000 approximately per business for monitoring wells. So I'm, I'm somewhat in between trying to figure out what is the right place to go and do, and I'm assuming you have all the right answers.
Um, unfortunately, I do not have answers to those questions because this pertains to the storm sewer system, not the sanitary sewer system.
Doggone, I was looking at the discharge.
Yes, so it has to do with the, any illicit discharges to our storm sewers since those feed directly into our river streams and ponds?
When I, with my bad vision right now, looking at illicit discharges, I assumed I was on the right page.
No, sorry, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. However, I, I do have a question about the, the fine as well. How frequently is that fine applied to those not in compliance?
We have not issued a fine for this particular ordinance ever because we don't have that many calls to it. When we do, typically our first mode of operation is education.
Okay.
And compliance, and we have found a few instances where there is something going in and we figure out what it is because it could be, could be something as, as complex as someone tied into a storm line with a sanitary line, or it could be that someone's dumping oil on the street or paint down the storm drains. That's an illicit discharge. So that's what this is in, in reference to. The fine that you see in there is just the boilerplate language that comes standard with any of the ordinances, so.
Okay, so similar to other municipalities likely? Okay. That was, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Hanky.
So let's go back to this one then, in cause and effect. We haven't issued any fines. What is the proposed change, change then in its purpose?
So the proposed change in its purpose is having to do with the general permits that were issued by the state in 2021. They changed the way storm water is regulated from a permit by rule to a general permit. And when they did that, they changed some definitions. They, and our ordinance referred to the old Rule 5, Rule 13. Now it refers to the construction storm water general permit or the MS4 general permit. So we were cleaning up our language so that we're matching what the regulations are at the state level. In addition, there are some allowed discharges and the state, things like our, our flushing of our hydrants and things of that nature. And the state had it in there in some, some form, and it wasn't real clear that that's what it was, and they made things much clearer. And so those allowed discharges were just updated. Nothing really changed other than clearing up the language. And so hence, we took out what was in there and inserted the new language as well.
So for practical purposes and at the end-user's side, would we expect any differences, any practice differences or?
No, actually, it, uh, one thing that, that we, that wasn't spelled out in there, for instance, was fundraising car washes. Now, if I wanted to read to the letter of the law, that could have been considered an illicit discharge. Nobody that I know of in the state ever went after a fundraiser for doing that, and now it's spelled out clearly in the regulations that, that is an allowed discharge. That does not mean that commercial car washers are exempt. Commercial car washers still supposed to go to the sanitary.
Yep.
That's a great explanation, Joe. We appreciate that. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience? Open up to the public for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing none, return it back to the council. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Got a motion from Mr. Mishler and a second from Mr. Hanky for third and final. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-22, an ordinance amending ordinance 5283, and ordinance regulating illicit discharge and connections to the City of Elkhart's storm water system. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-Zero-23 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-23, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development established under ordinance numbers 3632, 3650, 3721 of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart. Allow the conversion of two residential apartments into professional offices, a change in density for the PUD to be known as the Ridgewood Apartments PUD.
Thank you. Got a motion for Mr. Hanky.
Second.
Second for Mr. Curry. Council discussion. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience? Mr. Trotter.
Eric Trotter, Planning Department. I don't know if the representative is online. I, I, I don't know, but the request is to convert two of the existing units to office space so they can better serve the management. Right now, all of those activities go on in the manager's suite, which is the larger, so they want to convert to so they have a common area and an office space for the tenants.
Questions for Eric. Seeing none, thank you, sir. I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regard, with regards to this proposed ordinance? Seeing none, return it back to the council. Angie, Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment about these Ridgewood Apartments. They're right there awful hively, and from what I understand, they've changed ownership and you can see the difference in it. They've really renovated them and made them a lot better than they used to be. We're glad to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Anyone else? Angie, would you roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Motion for third and final, please. Tell move.
Second.
By Mr. Hanky, second by Mr. Holtz. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-23, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development established under ordinance numbers 3632, 3650, 3721 of the Common Council of the City of Elkhart. Allow the conversion of two residential apartment units into professional offices, a change in density for the PUD to be known as Ridgewood Apartments PUD. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero on third and final.
Read Proposed Ordinance 24-O-24 by title.
Proposed ordinance 24-O-24, an ordinance annexing certain real estate generally described as vacant land situated to the east of the east end of Vernon Avenue and the north, and north of the 3,300 block of Greenleaf Boulevard and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart.
Motion and second to adopt this ordinance on second reading. Motion by Mr. Hanky.
Second.
Crabtree. Council discussion. Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance on a public hearing?
Good evening. Crystal Welsh, Abbott Marsh, 303 River Race Drive in Goshen, and the petitioner Conway is here as well. We are asking to bring in some property that's at the end of Vernon Avenue, which is already in the City of Elkhart, platted, uh, single-family homes, for the intention of creating a new seven-lot subdivision for single-family units as well. Six of them will be on the cul-de-sac that will be created at the end of Vernon, and one will access right off of Greenleaf. The reason that's organized that way is because we need to loop some utilities. We have had preliminary conversations with the utility department as well as going to the plan commission, and we think it's a great opportunity to bring seven more housing units into the City of Elkhart, and we're looking for your support.
Thank you. Any questions for, Mr. Hanky?
Before, Crystal, I, I think I had mentioned to you, where would you say the median price of these houses are specifically? And then what size lots are they by percentage to current laterals?
Um, they're very similar in size to the other lots on Vernon Avenue specifically. The ones on Greenleaf may be a little bit deeper, but they're not really any larger. These will be approximately $400,000 homes, which in this day and age is a starter home almost these days. We did look at about 10 properties surrounding, and the assessed value, again, construction value and assessed value are not the same. About 75% is a rule of thumb. The, the, I wrote this down in preparation. The average home around there is about 217,000, median's about 227. So these, as new constructions will come in a little bit higher than the average cost of the homes around it, but that's the day and age we live in now. So they will be comparable in size approximately 13 to 1400 square feet, which is similar to what's out there now. Two and three-caller garages, and they hope to begin construction spring of '25 if everything goes well. So we're assuming assessed value will probably be about 300,000.
So 13 to 1500 square foot?
Yep.
So the proposed bedroom, number of bedrooms and baths?
I don't know that we've gotten that far. These aren't, aren't necessarily spec homes, so they'll be working with builders or to, to build.
I'm just looking at the square footage and trying to figure out what size family would go in these.
Well, I think if you look, look at trends, I was just reading an article the other day. In, in the early 2000s, we hit nationwide, statewide, large home production. Average home was about 2,700 square feet, and since then, it has dramatically reduced in size. Whereas now, homes are really coming in at the 15 to 1700 on a regular basis for families. People are, A, there's a lot more single occupancy households than there used to be. If you look at demographic data, the number of people per household has decreased, not only just in Elkhart, but across the state, from the two and a half to closer to 2.3. So household sizes are being reduced significantly. There's a lot more ones and twos households as opposed to threes and fours that you might have had in the past. So we think these housing units will fit a need that we have in our community, and so we think this is the right mix for this area.
Good. I'll be glad to see some good Republican families move in. Thank you.
I don't know what that had to do with anything, but thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Is there, it's my district as well. Is yours too, isn't it, Alex?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to going down there and checking it out.
There you go. Okay, I'm gonna close that and open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, return it to the council. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Hanky, a second from.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree for third and final. Would you read this ordinance by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-24, an ordinance annexing certain real estate generally described as vacant land situated to the east of the east end of Vernon Avenue and north of the 3,300 block of Greenleaf Boulevard and declaring the same to be part of the City of Elkhart. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-O-15 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-O-25, an ordinance annexing, repealing and replacing ordinance 5263, an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 21 and Section 29.9B of Ordinance 4370, the zoning ordinance of the City of Elkhart, Indiana.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance.
Tell move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, there's a second, by Mr. Mishler. Council discussion. Mr. Trotter.
Good evening. Eric Trotter again. The city is, sorry. City is being asked to update the language adopted originally in 2011 to comply with the updated minimum standards as prescribed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA in order to, for the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. By maintaining our current ordinance compliant, we meet the minimum standards established by FEMA, allowing us to continue to participate in the NFIP, which provides communities like Elkhart flood insurance, flood, uh, plane management, and flood hazard mapping for the purposes of reducing flood damage. In exchange, the NFIP makes federally-backed flood insurance available to homeowners, renters, and businesses in the community. Community participation in the NFIP is voluntary. Currently, the City of Elkhart has 67 total policies in the City of Elkhart with a total annual premium of $64,024, for a total coverage dollar amount of $14,010,000. All of the jurisdictions in the City of Elkhart or in the, in the Elkhart County are currently undergoing this ordinance update, and our ordinance has been curated for, specifically for the City of Elkhart. The updated model ordinance provides additional clarity on the requirements for application and finished construction for development in the special flood hazard area, as well as the duties for the local floodplain administrator, and the variance procedures and requirements. There were a number of new definitions added as, for clarity. This will, this will hope, help to guide both the layperson and professionals. Again, these are the new, some of the new language that was added, again, by the, by the, by FEMA was the, the no-rise. by the, by the, by FEMA was the, uh, the no-rise requirement, which is no increase in flood levels in the floodway, which means there's no additional flood discharge without first obtaining a conditional letter of map revision and meeting the technical requirements for sub-able. The manufactured home development standards have also been updated. Um, I don't know how much more you want me to, I can continue to talk or?
Questions, questions.
There's just a lot of, there's a lot of words, I'm sorry.
I mean, is there any way you can put that in layman's terms so the public understands?
What this does is overarching, is this language is required for us to participate, again, in the National Flood Insurance Program. The federal government and the state have, again, curated this ordinance specifically for the City of Elkhart. Largely, most of this is a reorganization and further explanation within the ordinance. Most of it is the same, just reorganized in a different, in a different manner.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
And what would be the consequence of not being in compliance with this?
If we don't adopt this ordinance, we would not be eligible to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, and I think the biggest outcome of that would be that all of the people, the 67 flood policies, would go onto the open market, and they would not be backed by the federal government, which would very likely and greatly increase their, their premiums.
Oh, Eric, um.
Ms. King.
Sorry. Um, this flood, um, policy, um, in regards to the residents, um, it would benefit us once.
Yeah, and it, it, it makes their, the participation, the, the federal government, FEMA provides us the mapping and does that without that, it would make that more difficult.
Mr. Curry.
When we had the 100-year flood back, I think it was '18, did people benefit from this?
Yes, they were eligible, because we were, we were participating, they were eligible for, um, emergency grants, and, uh, we were also eligible for a program to buy out some of those homes that were severely damaged in the floodway. And the difference in the floodway and the flood fringe is the floodway is the area that is subject to moving water during a flood event, which is the most dangerous. And most of the area that where we had, well, we, the majority of the homes were bought out on North Fifth and North Sixth. That area is in the floodway and suffered the most damage. We did buy out one house off of, um, Indiana and Taylor, um, where she had to be rescued from the house.
Thank you. Mr. Hanke.
First-hand experience, and I just wanna give a little bit more latitude here. Uh, the National Flood Insurance Program does very little, um, quite honestly. Um, in, what was it, 2008, major floods? Um, I had three homes affected, 1464, 1462, and 1456 Hudson. Lost furnaces, washers, dryers, drywall, and paid flood insurance to the point of, um, outstanding balance to a bank. Um, FEMA, on any national program or grant, only covers load-bearing movement of walls, does not cover flooring, does not cover drywall, major appliances, which by the way, furnaces are not. Um, so I find it that we are locally paying a lot of dollars for big floods, um, in areas of Florida, North Carolina, and those areas. We just bear, um, some of the extra payments, not necessarily qualifying for anything real. Um, on the other hand of this, I would hate to be the one to step in front of people's personal access to our National Flood Program, and that's up to them to defend themselves in addition to all the premiums that we, that we have. Having said that, this is also a time when we're looking at, um, revising and renewing the, the hydro dam with INM, and unfortunately, the last time this was done was under Dave Miller in year 2000, or 2001, right in there somewhere. And the area that we were told about, and I argued too late, was that we have zero control over the flow of that water. Now, Elkhart being surrounded by two bodies of water, and the, and the other one, um, isn't dammed until near Fort Wayne, we have zero control of that one. Um, but the Elkhart Dam, Hydro Dam, actually is a asset of the city, and I wish that we would have written in, but we understood too late, um, that they only let go what headwater comes to the dam, which means we're already in flood by the time they move the flood to the next level, the next level, and the next level. And the proposal that I had put forth at that time was that they would forecast the flood and start to lower levels from the furthest dam backward, which would be, um, St. Joe, Michigan. And that was never written, so Elkhart gets flooded to its own demise because we have no say-so in this, uh, water table. It's controlled, uh, out of Ohio. No one locally controls the dam, and they get to do nothing about it. But once these two things meet, we're surrounded by floodwaters. We're expected to have more floods than normal because of climate change and water table changes, and yet if we sign another document without trying to enforce any flood controls, we do it to ourselves in a lot of ways. So it's unfortunate, especially I don't own those properties anymore. Um, you know, so for that reason, in my time of ownership, there were three floods that hit those properties, and not one time did FEMA pay $1 towards mitigation. Just to lay it out there, but again, each person had to, has to defend themselves. I'm not here to obstruct their ability to do so, but for us locals, not a good program.
Yeah, and you remember those supermajority Republicans you were talking about? They could probably help you with that.
Regardless if they're Republican or Democrat, if you blindly vote, it's wrong.
That's true. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Mishler.
Yes, uh, speaking of the, the dam, I appreciate you for bringing that up, uh, councilman, because we do have a upcoming public meeting that I encourage all residents to attend, and that will be, shh, when is that? Uh, July 9th from 5:30 to 7:30, and July 11th, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30, and...
Why don't, why don't you bring it up to a new business? Yeah, okay. Is there anyone else in the public? Thank you, Eric. Is there anyone in the public would like to speak with regards to this? Saying none, return it back to the council. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mr. Mishler for third and final. Would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, Angie, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-25, an ordinance, ordinance annexing repealing and replacing ordinance 5263, an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 21 and Section 29.9B of Ordinance 4370, the zoning ordinance of the City of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Ordinances or resolutions referred to committee, the resolutions that were referred to committee at our last committee meeting, at our last council meeting, will remain in committee and will be dealt when we schedule our special meeting, uh, and I'll schedule that during the meeting times. So those resolutions will remain in committee. Uh, okay. Tabled all this resolutions, this ordinance remained, proposed ordinance 24-0-10 remains table. Uh, new business, is there any new business? Mr. Hanke.
Um, can't see with or without, so we'll take them off. Uh, so, uh, update, I think, um, there were some computer glitches. Uh, by the time mine was reactivated, there were 13,421 emails in my inbox. I know that Corinne, um, put on social media that it's because I refuse to use a city system, and that, that's not true at all. Um, I can use, um, any system and gain access. The issue was, uh, that all the emails were being forwarded to my personal email, and I'm told there was a policy switch. I did ask, uh, for a copy of that original notification. So when we finally did get that done, and they had to go to the administrator to actually reactivate a password, that allows me to change the password. Uh, the issue there was, I was allowed to log in, but I couldn't go further without changing the password, and I was disallowed to do so. Um, in that, when we finally got it, it was noticed that all interest city system, um, emails were forwarded to my personal email address. Only those that came through the city and never forwarded to my email address. So we had a dual problem, and I'm not sure why that is. Uh, one's an internal system, and the other one is obviously external, being third party. Uh, but notably, I wanted to make sure that we all got on the same page. For over 16 years, all of my emails were forwarded on to my personal email address, and as of late, because I was missing some from constituents, they alerted me that they got bounced back. Did we find a problem? Can't say that they know what happened. I'm told they're still working on it, but I can actually log into the city email address system at this time. Um, I also wanted to report, and I'm not sure where code enforcement is or what we do, but, uh, you know, it's getting old in reporting. Six cars parked on the front of lawns, I mean, in the direct front of lawns, between Hively and Mishawaka Road on Benham. Um, just actively in front, when you put all that roadway and brand-new stuff through there, you expect updates, and people don't seem to notice that. But more importantly, I'm wondering where zoning and code enforcement is on this problem. There were five cars parked on lawns, four more in tree lawns on Prairie from Main to Hively. Four cars on lawns on Beardsley between Johnson, Johnson and Oslo, and I've turned those in multiple times, still, I mean, the ruts are...
You turned them in through 311?
Been there, did that, multiple times.
You turned all those into 311?
Yep, over the last 18 months. I mean, the ruts are in the yard. So, um, as you know, I have list of things that I have requested of city departments, and they have not come, so I, I'm here to, and as I'm supposed to alert, uh, the city that I have accessed, uh, I've had a conference with the Indiana Access Councilors on all the filings that I've had in the last six months, and the emails, um, and text messages that are related to them, and plan to proceed forward until I gain access to the requested information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. King.
Oh, in regards to, um, the cars parked on Prairie Street, and that is your district, isn't it, correct? Well, I had the opportunity of riding with Tim Visstein last week, and, uh, just had questions in regards to that, but with it being a lack of parking, and, um, it's better for them to park in the tree lawn until we get funding to, you know, give access. Uh, otherwise, if they park in the street, it would be limited access for emergency vehicles to go through. So as for now, and I think he's, uh, online, he may be able to speak to it, but, um, this, we need parking, and as we're going through the neighborhoods, uh, family homes, um, they have more people living with them now, and a lot of them don't have garages, and they have to go through the alleys, and it's limited parking back, you know, uh, for them. So as for now, we'd rather for them to be on the tree lawn than for them to be on the streets, then it would be hard for the traffic to go back and forth.
Mr. Mishler.
Uh, yes, thank you. I just want to commend the city on an excellent job, uh, during Jazz Fest, as well as cleaning up after Jazz Fest. Um, you know, immediately, a couple days after, you wouldn't even be able to tell that there were thousands of people having a great time, uh, downtown in our community. Um, so that is always good to see. Um, no, yeah, and, um, also, uh, I wanna thank the Parks Department again for their rollout of the roller skating at NIBCO. I've had some great comments on that. It seems to be a good success, and I look forward to seeing more of that.
Thank you. Mr. Holtz.
I'd just like to echo, uh, Councilman Mishler's sentiments about the Jazz Fest. It was fantastic. Uh, all the acts I attended were very entertaining and, uh, very well-attended, and then also commending the city workers for cleaning up, and by Thursday, and actually, I think it probably could happen Monday, you know, as quick as it happened, uh, Loner on the Lawn was fantastic as well. The number of, uh, families that were there to see the, uh, Taylor Swift, you know, impersonation band, or whatever you would call it, uh, it was amazing. Uh, food trucks that were there were good, and there were hundreds of people having a good time. Really enjoyed it.
Thank you. There are no ordinances on first reading, there are no resolutions, there are no vacation hearings, reports of the mayor, board of works, board of safety department heads, there are no reports, neighborhood association reports.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I'd just like to announce that the PMRAN Neighborhood Association will meet on Sunday, July 7th at 5:00 PM at the corner of Dying Heart and Hawthorne Drive in the Greenspace.
Thank you, Mr. Fifth District. Uh, privilege of the floor, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
Harvest.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Tanya.
Uh, I also like to thank, um, the residents that came out to Ulrich Park. Um, the mayor gave, uh, a state of the city there. It was a great turnout. Everyone brought their lawns, we had food, and, um, they were really excited to hear what was going on within our city and, and things we're doing within our community and within the neighborhood associations. So, uh, got a few more signed up and ready for, um, uh, community cleanup, and so, and thank you, Mayor, for coming out there, and, um, they are still talking about it, and we're looking forward to, to more. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that wasn't, that's not on the agenda?
Mr. President, members of the council, uh, my name is Ralph Spellbring. Probably the worst ordinance that's been passed in the time I've been here was the one that confined property owners for having snow on their sidewalks. That indicated to me that those people don't walk very much in the wintertime. Actually, it's safer if you let nature take its course. If you go out and try and clean off the snow, you probably won't get all of it, then the sun will melt the snow in the daytime, and ice will form at night. So I think it's better to let nature take its course than, uh, have that ordinance. I'm not sure whether that ordinance was ever enforced, and it was repealed. I'm not sure how many years it was on the books, and that particularly affects senior citizens like myself. We, we may be gone for a few weeks during the wintertime, and, you know, we shouldn't be expected to clean off the, have somebody clean off the snow while we're gone. Uh, you may see, uh, s- tags on some properties, mowing required within 48 hours. Suppose that is placed on a Friday, uh, that, some religions observe Saturday, some religions observe Sunday, so that means you've got one day. I think that violates the, uh, religious clause of the United States Constitution, and it's unreasonable. Uh, Mr. President, I've got something that I prepared. Indiana City Courts do not exist to protect city employees from evidence that may indicate city employee misconduct, mistakes, or neglect. Indiana City Courts should follow the United States Constitution. Therefore, Elkhart City Judge should be replaced because he thinks the United States Constitution does not apply here. Essentially, his attitudes toward the United States Constitution corresponds to that of the police officers who assaulted a prisoner. Twenty properties in south-central Elkhart were public health hazards with abandoned tires in the 2018 summer. Today is Canada Day. Uh, my name is Ralph Spellbring. Also, uh, I... Also, uh, I heard, uh, news reports that, uh, disease-bearing mosquitoes were found last month in Elkhart and Saint Joseph Counties.
Thank you, Ms. Spellbring. Is there anyone else? Saying none, we'll close the privilege of the floor. Scheduling of committee meetings on Wednesday, July tenth at six P M. There will be a special council meeting to deal with the tax abatements, Wednesday, July tenth, six P M. Can I get a motion for acceptance of communications? Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. King, accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Still move.
Mr. Crabtree, second by...
Second.
Mr. Mishler, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.